Councilor Fonseca, can you hear us in the chambers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I call and order the Marshalltown City Council. We are at the City Hall Council Chambers at 10 West State Street. It's November 24th, 2025, and it is 5:30. If you will join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. Can I have roll call, please?
Fonseca?
Here.
Kel?
Here.
Lottie Hoff?
Here.
Mitchell?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Okay, we're going to move on to public comment. Members of the public may make comments on any item that was not on the agenda during this time. The speaker shall approach the microphone and state their name and address. Comments shall be limited to three minutes unless a longer comment is authorized by the mayor. The speaker shall direct comments to the mayor and the council as a whole. The mayor and council may provide a response to a public comment but shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public. No action may be taken on items raised in public comments to comply with open meetings laws. And with that, the floor is open.
Hi, I'm Charles Logan, they call me Doc. I live at 406 North Third Avenue, kitty corner from Haley's Store, our restaurant. What I want to bring up, and I've been there for seven years now where I live, is the racing down Third Avenue every night. And a good friend of mine, it lives with me, his sister died because of this racing stuff. She walked across Third Avenue and got hit two weeks ago, three weeks ago. And I think something needs to be brought up, that we need to get this stuff stopped. And they're doing it between 7:00 and 4:00 a.m. in the morning. I don't know if it's a white car or what, but it's a white car, but I don't know what it is. They put them big mufflers on their cars and this guy comes by my house every night and it sounds, he revs it up and it sounds like a gunshot going off. And I work at 6:00 a.m. in the morning at Miss Quackey. I'm getting really tired of the racing. I used to be a kid too, but not down Third Avenue. They want to go race, go find somewhere else to do it. That's their decision, but I wanted to bring it up to you guys just to let you know what's going on. And we need to get something stopped on it if we can. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Lonnie Hoagland, 1408 East Main. Charles, Doc was a classmate of mine that brings a prelude to my shirt. I'm wearing it tonight just not to look like an obnoxious clown. It's to say, slow down and move over. I've never really had a close call myself. People have known me for being the smiley face guy. I don't know that I knew that nice lady that had an incident in the past. I took the liberty to put a smiley face by her flowers that were there. I hope the family knows that I'm trying to help them heal. I hope they don't take it derogatory, but I went ahead and put it there. But please, I think there's a school administrator not supposed to point people out. Maybe it needs to be taught in school that you slow down and move over for not just emergency ambulance, fire trucks, police, sheriff, anything with emergency lights. That means a nice administrator that I'm not supposed to talk about has their emergency lights, flashers on. Take the courtesy to just slow down and move over, scoot over. Give someone with a flat tire that courtesy. That's on a somber note, I'm sorry about that. I want to get back to a happier note. I want to tell people, let's try and get along. We're getting ready to have a new city council. Let's be positive. I am an optimistic guy. Look at what's going on in this town. A lot of good stuff. We're about ready to have a good mall. It's amazing. We're getting a water park this cool. I'm a certified Marshalltown morning optimist and then it defunct. I was a Marshalltown evening optimist and then it defunct. I'm not a noon optimist. The optimist is only noon now. I need to join it. I've got 42 other things going on, but be optimistic. Try and find the goods and stuff, but slow down and move over. I was going to talk about their snow ordinance is going to come into effect with a police chief. Maybe the chief is not here tonight, but if you park on the snow route and the snow plows are coming, just have the courtesy to get the car out of the way for the, for the snow plow. It just cleans your street off better. I'm sorry to take more than three minutes. I'm trying to be positive.
Thank you.
Julian Ballard, 610 North Second Avenue. And I want to agree with this gentleman. I live on North Second Avenue by the cemetery and the car has gone up and down Highway 14, Third Avenue. It's horrendous. And I'm talking about loud racing. Usually there's two of them going. Something's got to be done or we're going to have somebody killed. In fact, we had a lady on the corner of Third Avenue in Riverside about two years ago. A guy was racing down the street, tried to go around her, but he hit a car that was, or he went into her because a car, he had a red light, a car was coming on Riverside and he ran back into her. She's lucky she didn't die. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John Wardon. I live in Green Mountain. And the reason I'm here tonight is to encourage the council to not agree to the consent agenda. And the reason is, has to do with number three. The mayor and the council has appointed and approved Mr. Manis. But the library, the trustee handbook states that the board should be made up of a cross-section of the community and it is not now and will not be either with Mr. Manis. There is no blue collar representation on the library board right now and he will not add to that. There are however, two applicants to the appointment, to the appointment that are still eligible. So I would like for you to give the mayor the opportunity to appoint one of those two gentlemen who are supremely qualified and would bring a blue collar representation. If you look at your council, you are fairly well representative with balance and so that needs to happen. And secondly, I'd like for the opportunity to be able to address the library annual report after it's given as well. Going back to the blue collar representation, the county needs this. This county and town are, it's a blue collar city and a blue collar county and we definitely need that representation. The, Mr. Manis replaces a trustee who was a trustee in name only. She did not represent the unincorporated county. So basically it was, we were supporting the library and we did not have representation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing done, let's move on to mayor, council and administrator comments. Do you have anything, Carol? Okay. Not yet. Any councilors have any comments? I have nothing. Okay, let's move on to years of service. I see the fire chief getting up.
Hello, mayor and council. My name is Christopher Cross. I'm your fire chief. And I'd like to introduce, we have two members receiving an award this evening. One had a family emergency who had to be, wasn't able to come tonight, but I'll say some quick, brief words about Fire Marshal Wornell. Josh has been with the service for, or been with the department for 15 years and he is integral to the staff. He's, brings a wonderful mix of long-term tenure as a hometown guy. He knows just about everybody and he knows just about everything with near encyclopedic recall of the... Can everybody hear me okay?
You're fine.
Okay. Near encyclopedic recall of code. I'm very proud of him in the way that he's progressed throughout his career since being a firefighter, since I came on the job. And he is indispensable to me and I'm very happy that he's a member of my command staff. So he's been here for 15 years. The next gentleman I'd like to introduce is Deputy Chief Kurt Rowi. Please come forward. So I'd like to congratulate Deputy Chief Rowi on 15 years of service with the Marshalltown Fire Department.
Thank you, Chief.
And I'll just take about two minutes to brag about Chief Rowi. Chief is newly appointed. He just was promoted from captain to deputy chief. The deputy chief is my executive officer. He's in charge of the operations division and the training division. Make sure that all of our people get the necessary continuing education to maintain medical certifications and we're doing all of the training according to ISO guidelines so that we have a well-rounded, well-trained, competent and professional staff. Chief Rowi has jumped in with both feet into the deep end of his pool. He's progressing along nicely and he's going to be a fantastic, high-level chief officer. Not like he already isn't, but he's going to be, he's going to be a great chief and he's going to be around to provide leadership and guidance to the department for a long time to come. So I thank you for being part of my staff, chief. Very proud to serve alongside you and congratulations on 15 years. Thank you.
Carol?
Sure.
I'm Carol Webb. I'm the city administrator and I am here to present Diana Steiner with her 10-year service award. So Diana, it's been a pleasure working with Diana. She, and I've been here one year and in that year she's taught me so much about the city and the city's budget. She's very dedicated to her job. She's a great leader in the organization, really models the behaviors that we want to see of employees in the organization. I'm very proud of her and the work that her team does. They've been doing a lot of, well, they don't really have a season off. They go from audit to budget to annual reports and then they start that all over again. And that's, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of stress on her and the staff and I think she handles it with grace. So I just want to say to her, thank you very much for your service to the city and for being a good mentor for me.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, I do need to mention that some people who are not here. Esmeralda Armus at Public Works, she's put in 10 years. We also have Ted Smith in the street department, 15 years. Rick Weitzel, street department, 15 years. And Jim Trowbridge, sewer department, 25 years. So let's give them a round of applause. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mitchell? Nichols? Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to reports. Library Board of Trustees Annual Report.
Sarah Rosenblum, sorry, Sarah Rosenblum, library director, and I have with me, Joa LeVille, youth services manager. Joa gets the pleasure of talking about all the fun stuff. You do have our infographic. This is I think our second or third year doing this. I want to thank Mara Adler for putting all this together. Most of our statistics stayed pretty much in line with previous years. I don't know if you remember, a couple of years ago, we saw a huge increase of over 10,000 checkouts in our youth department and we determined that was due to how we did a whole redo of our face-out shelving. So it's amazing how one thing can really make a major impact. A couple of things that we did notice this year was that, you know, we are a diverse community and DVDs are still very popular in our library and we circled 5,000 more DVDs than the previous year. And so you might think, who checks out DVDs? But we check out tons of TV shows, British mysteries, old types of shows like, you know, McHale's Navy and people... We're a wonderful library, and we are very unique, and I think we stand alone in many regards. One of the other things that was really fun this year was that we really got our seed library up and running. We use our old card catalog, and it's very cool, and we distributed 900-plus seed packets. We had people bring back seeds. So that was really fun. We have some challenges coming up. Our, the vendor that we bought all of our books from, for the most part, all of our adult books, has gone out of business. And along with that, the software that we use to catalog our collection. So we're under a real gun because that's ending like next month. So we're really trying, the books we can buy, but the software, it's going to be something. So there might be a small slowdown, and you getting your materials or not finding them. So just be patient with us, but we're going to rise to the challenge. I don't know. As you can see, you know, again, about 110,000 people visited the library last year. Sometimes we don't catch everybody because the gate counter is actually in those clear plastic gates. So if you just come to a meeting, we try to, that's why we ask you, like, how many people attended your meeting? Sometimes people, you know, they're like, oh, it was 12, maybe it was 20. So, but we try to do that. So, does anybody have any questions about statistics? And then on the back, we have, of course, cute pictures, and Joa is going to show us a lot more cute pictures and talk more about youth services.
Hi. I just wanted to show you a couple of things that I think are interesting, just to give you a little taste of what we're doing. So, first of all, from our website, just in case you ever want to see fun examples Flickr, and we have things in albums. So you can see lots of fun, lots of fun stuff going on. Some things from the summer, some things from the fall. We do, after each program, you know, try to put some photos on Facebook, but then we maintain this Flickr album for more, kind of, our historical and for more pictures, and also because then we know that family members can, you know, it doesn't, Facebook degrades the photos if people want to share it with their family. So I just encourage you to go on there. I know there's a picture of Ava on there, doing the, I think, the diamond painting. So I just wanted to point that out, but then I also wanted to show you an example of, so we have some statistics on this sheet, but on our challenge software, which is called Beanstack, it's a software program that we use to run mostly our summer challenge, summer reading challenge, as well as, we have an ongoing challenge called Read 1,000 Books Together. But I just wanted to show you something I think is kind of interesting, and maybe I should be smarter and do this. So on that, one of the things that I really like is it has insights, which are just kind of like a snapshot view of some data. And so you can see that this summer, we had 860 kids from, that's babies through teenagers, sign up for our summer reading challenge. And of those, 279 reached what we call the completion level, and you can kind of see, you know, there's zero here because that's not what we track. But what I really wanted to show you is down here, because this, I think, you know, we don't really have an extrapolation when you walk through the door of where you're from, but I think this shows a really good example of how the broad scope of who the library serves. So you can see that of those 800-some people, you can see where they're all coming from. You can see every elementary in Marshalltown, every school in Marshalltown, every area school, we have a large homeschooled usage of the library, online school. Kids, usually the other is, they're here visiting for the summer, maybe with dad, you know, they live in a different town or whatever. And so I'm really proud of that, and we also look at that and compare it to like, what percentage of the population of those students are we serving? So we can look for gaps and think about how can we, you know, really make sure that we're making that accessible to everybody. Now, this doesn't necessarily represent everyone using the library. This is just the people that choose to sign up for the summer reading challenge. And so also, you see that this year, the second graders are really winning for summer reading, and I think that that's really exciting because, you know, you've probably heard of the read, the third grade being such a pivotal reading age where you switch from learning to read to reading to learn. And so that's a great age to see a lot of signups. And then, as you might expect, when you get to high school, it goes down a little bit. A lot of those kids are pretty, readers that are in high school are usually pretty self-motivated. So, anyway, I just wanted to show that because I know some of you really like data, and I just think that's an interesting picture showing just how many people come to the library from all around the county. So, does anybody have any questions about that? Okay, thanks.
I'd just like to say about Beanstack. Beanstack is something, we used to do the paper, some of you probably remember the paper where you would do the reading log. And when COVID hit, we had been talking about Beanstack, but we, Joa got it up and running in like three weeks. It's normally like a three-month basic minimum process. I mean, she worked 10 hours a day to get it up and running, and, you know, we've learned a lot over the five years. Is it five years that we've had it? But, you know, it was, it's an important piece of software, and when we first got it, the Rotary paid, helped pay for it for the first three years. So we didn't even, we don't even talk about all the organizations that we partner with. But, you know, it's just, it's a really great way to see everything that's happening, and these are statistics that if we go to write a grant, along with all those fabulous pictures, these are things that we're able to immediately dive down into, find those facts, and then fill out a grant application. Could be that maybe we also work closely with the school district, but Parks and Rec. So these are things that really, it gives us a real huge database of things that we can immediately go in, pluck out, and fill in those grant applications. So it's really nice to have that. I do want to mention one other thing that's going on at the library, and Mike knows this well. We are seeing an uptick in homeless people. I used to think it was two or three, and now sometimes we're seeing six, 10 people. We're having people camp on the grounds. You know, we're certainly aware of it. We work closely with Impact, with the police department, but it is certainly something that's hitting not just our library. I know Ames told me they've been really overwhelmed. They saw a huge push from when Des Moines changed their laws. So it is something, I mean, it's, you know, and we try to work with everybody, and, you know, we work with people at the halfway houses, we give a temporary card. So, you know, it's a fact of life. I've been in the library in 45 years, there's always been homeless people at the library. You think about, where else can you go that's a free, welcoming, warm space with computers, bathrooms, people that aren't going to hassle you? You can plug in your computer, you can plug in your rolling chair. We ask that you don't leave it at the library. Sometimes that happens. But, you know, these are, this is kind of what we're doing with. And of course, the homeless task force, we are looking, you know, for different solutions and how we can help people in our community. I know, we're going to come back and talk about the building in a bit. Is there anything else? No?
Anyone have anything?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. You need to step forward.
The people that work at the library are doing a fantastic job. There's no question about that.
John, are your comments regarding the report?
Yes, that's the way I'm leading off.
Go ahead.
So, but I've noticed that the only thing that is not included is here is any information about or including the Board of Trustees. And I believe there should be, and I believe that trustees who are truly representing the patrons should insist on having a say in this. And it's telling that they have not. This is because this is, this month is the third anniversary of a dust-up with the library board by me and other people, 200 people, just to mention.
John, you're not talking about the report. Please sit down. Thank you. Okay, moving on to motions.
We have a motion to approve the move of the December 14th, 2026 council meeting to December 7th, 2026.
I so move. Second.
I have a motion and a second. I don't think this really needs any public comment. Let's have a roll call, please.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to resolutions.
Resolution approving the annual street financial report for fiscal year ending 2025.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. Let me pull up the report here. So annually, if any city or county receives road use tax, they're required to fill out this report, which I'm going to go over with you. I thought I was going to.
I think you just closed it.
Oh, did I? Okay, let me just bring it back up. So we have to report on different types of items. So in the general fund, we pay our salaries for the streets department out of here, out of the general fund. This is actually transferred from the road use tax to fund it, and then we pay for the benefits, and that comes from the employee tax levy. And then we pay for insurance, liability insurance, and that comes from the insurance levy. So coming out of the general fund is about $1.6 million. But none of the general fund itself doesn't pay for anything directly. It's all transferred in to fund it. So then you come over to the road use tax. So when you go to the gas station, you're paying about 30 cents on the gallon of gas, and that gets sent to the state, and then the state reallocates it based on census. I was at a meeting last week, a budget meeting for different cities, and many fast-growing, larger cities are paying to have their census redone, so they get a bigger pot of the pie when their census is higher. So anyway, this helps pay for repairs on vehicles, and then you can see that it has street lighting. We pay about $269,000 in street lighting, $55,000 for traffic signals, $165,000 for snow removal, $78,000 for highway engineering. This would be people we contract out with. And we pay a few salaries out of there, the custodian and the GIS technician. The other special revenues come from TIF, and they are transferred to the debt service And local option sales tax, if we would have had anything paid out of there, that would have been reported under that column. So the debt service fund, so many years ago, we had Olive and Madison put as a TIF project. And so that money comes out of the special revenue fund and goes into the debt service fund to pay for those bonds. In addition, there's other bonds as well. So when we get a new bond, I have to split it between street and non-street projects. So if it's a Parks and Rec project or whatever, can't count it. It's totally separate. So I'm running multiple debt schedules for different bonds. So you can see between the principal and interest and bond fees, we're paying almost $3.5 million for debt service. And then the capital projects are actually what you're spending the bonds for. So again, almost all streets, $1.6 million in new roadways and $1.9 million in capacity improvement. And the utilities, a lot of times when you're building a street, you may have stormwater projects with that. So that's just the stormwater reimbursing for that project. So here's the page for the revenue. Again, as I explained before, a general fund is either they're coming from property tax levies or transferring in from other funds. The road use tax itself, $3.9 million is what we received in fiscal year '25. We budgeted about 3.8, so it came in a little bit higher. We didn't spend the fund balance down as fast as we originally thought, so we have almost half a million dollars gained in income, interest income. And the other special revenues, again, these are your tax levies, your local option sales tax, your TIF funds, and some federal grants. Debt service, just transferring that in from other funds and capital projects. We show about $891,000 in interest, but as you know, there are arbitrage rules, so some of that may be having to be sent back to the IRS. And then we have some federal grants and some contributions. So what those are, a lot of times, again, you're doing a street project, you may need Marshalltown Waterworks to do their piece of it, so they're reimbursing us. The same thing for the stormwater. So this page shows all the different bonds that we're using for streets, and what is outstanding and what we paid in principal and interest. And then the next section is just the equipment. So this is what we've purchased that are street-related over the years, and if you go to the last page of that, this is the new equipment that we purchased in FY '25. So we purchased two international dump trucks at a total cost of almost $350,000, a Polaris Ranger UTV for $19,000, a Dodge Ram bucket truck for $60,000, a John Deere compact track skid voder for $102, a mobile lift for $40,000, and a Doolittle trailer for $17,000. So those are the new purchases for the year. And then this report, street projects report, shows what was completed at June 30th. So you can see that State Street was a big project this year. The contract price was $6 million, and we came at $5.9. And that was with constructing. And then this is just the summary. So if you look at the total expenses, $10.8 million, not including transfers in or out. About the same amount for the expense side. Any questions on these?
Yes, Your Honor?
Yes.
Easy question. So when they redo a street and they have to do the ADA compliant sidewalks, is that part of the street or is that a different infrastructure cost?
Usually it's not. I'll look at Heather here.
So in the projects that Diana has listed in this report, the sidewalk improvements would be part of the street project. Road use tax allows sidewalks to be an eligible road use tax expense when it's done concurrently with the street itself. However, if I would go out right now and do a sidewalk project where we are not improving the street, that would not be road use tax eligible.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Let's move on to roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to resolution number two. Okay. Moving on to resolution number two.
Resolution approving the annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Move for approval.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Diana?
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. Let me pull this report up here. Let's go find it. Hold on.
That one should be at the top still.
I'm not seeing it.
Oh, okay.
It's this one? Can you pull it up? Well, I'll start my spiel while Alicia looks for it. So this report summarizes our actual revenue and expenses for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. It also shows the amended budget that was updated and approved by council in April of twenty twenty-four. This is a cash basis report. This is different than our audit report, which is accrual basis. The reason we use cash basis is because that's how we budget. The first page, thank you, Alicia, this first page was published in the newspaper today. So it's a recap of all of our revenues and expenses. The governmental column here is comprised of the general funds, special revenue funds, TIF, debt service, and capital projects. And this proprietary column is made up of Marshalltown Waterworks, the sewer and stormwater, compost, transit, and aquatic center concessions. So the top third of this page is the revenues that were actually received for the year. So just to highlight a few, our property tax revenue was fourteen point eight million dollars. Our use of money and property would be interest revenue. Our charges for fees and service, are those council-approved that we could charge customers for if they're using a particular item, let's say a building permit, then they're charged for that particular permit. The intergovernmental, that was quite a difference. Most of that is derived from the lead grant. We were overly optimistic about how much we would accomplish when we budgeted it. So that just came in under. That will be received in this fiscal year. So down to expenditures. So there's nine areas here, and you need to stay within budget. And I'm proud to say that we came in under budget. So that's good, because if we were going to go over, we would have needed to do a budget amendment before that happened. So they're really coming in fairly close to what we budgeted, except for, again, this health and social services. So that was the lead grant. So if you look at this number, we have ninety-four point seven million dollars in cash. And if you also add in these two numbers, which is the non-budgeted internal service funds, so that is your health insurance, workers' comp, occupational insurance, and those called internal service funds because we're basically self-supporting them. And then the agency funds, it's a negative seven thousand. That's due to Marshall County Communications Commission. They still owed us that much. At the end of June, we do their payroll, and whenever other expenses, like IT-related items, they reimburse us for that. So for debt, almost seventy-seven million dollars in debt, of which fifty-one million is general obligation debt. That means that we can levy for property taxes on that money, and the revenue debt would be coming from the enterprise funds. So if you look at the general obligation debt limit, that is five percent of your assessed valuations. So we are at a hundred and eight million dollars is legally what we could borrow. However, the council restricts, has restricted us to seventy percent of this number. So that amount is about seventy-five million. And we are only at fifty-one million. So we have plenty we can borrow if the council chooses to. So these other pages just are more detailed of what rolls up on to page one. And I explained a lot of these in my memo, so I won't go over them again. So you have the whole revenue section, and then you have expenditures. You can see that, like, for example, public safety is broken out between police and then fire, animal control, building inspections. So it just gives you a little bit more detail of how it's broken out. And then this section is the debt section, and it tells you what the purpose of the bond is for. So this top one, water utility, is Marshalltown Waterworks. And then you have sewer, and you have TIF revenues, general obligation debt, and stormwater. So again, says the outstanding, what it was at the beginning of the fiscal year, how much we paid down, and then your ending balance, which is broken out between general obligation and revenue debt. And page eleven and twelve are new this year. So before, we just had to fill out these boxes with amounts. Now they want the detail of how we got there. So we list every bond that's outstanding at June thirtieth, what the interest rates were, when they were issued, the resolution number, et cetera. So you may notice that some of these have multiple, have names with the same description on them. And that's because if they have a different revenue source, we had to break them out into different rows. And also, let's say, for example, we're going to borrow ten million dollars, and one year we said we were going to have seven hundred thousand of that being for tennis courts. So that was a special vote that we had to deal for that seven hundred thousand, because it was considered general corporate purpose rather than essential corporate purpose. So those rows are also broken out. So I tried to put enough description in here, so if you wanted to add, you know, like the two thousand sixteen aid together, it comes back to our original number. But that was a new requirement this year. So is there any questions on any of this annual report?
Does anyone have any questions up here? Anything from the public? Let's have a roll call then.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution number three, please.
Resolution authorizing certification of Code of Iowa four oh three point one nine Tax Increment Financing TIF indebtedness to the county auditor for each urban renewal area within the city of Marshalltown for fiscal year twenty-seven.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So annually, we have to do this. It's due by December first to the county auditor. This is how much we're telling the county to certify for debt, and also how much we want them to collect for us for these different TIF areas. So at the last meeting, we talked about internal loans, which are like legal bills or staff time. And then we also talked about an annual appropriation for certain development agreements. So that's how this all fits together with this. So in East Side, TIF number two, we're requesting the county to collect money for the Menards rebate, the Marshalltown Company, city administrative staff time, C. Kendall Consulting, which, as I discussed last time, this was her bills after we already certified last year that came in. So I'm picking it up this year, and then legal fees. For TIF number three, which is the retail division on the south side, we're going to go to this page. So under here, we're funding the Marshalltown Chamber of Commerce at a hundred thousand a year. We're paying for some bond funds, principal and interest payments. We're funding McFarland Clinic for their development agreement at two hundred ninety, the Rise VA Medical Center for a hundred thousand, the Marshallgam Hawkeye Hotels, which is Holiday Inn Express, at a hundred and twenty thousand, city administrative time, one thousand, and some legal bills for about twenty-three thousand, and C. Kendall Consulting for seven hundred. If you want money to stop and have a question, let me know. So then we'll move on to TIF number four, which is downtown area. So here we have some legal bills, and then C. Kendall Consulting, and then some bond payments. And then we're going to make some developer payments to Jose Regalado, which is the supermarket right on the street, Flint Hills Holdings, which is Marshalltown Lofts. We're intentionally not going to add more money at this time. Their evaluations dropped, as I talked about last time. So we still have cash on hand, so to speak, so we're not going to certify anymore this year. This will also include Willard Hopkins Development Agreement and Betty's Properties, which is the new pharmacy downtown. And then we have the Marshalltown Central Business District for the main street operations, and then the facade code safety grants and staff administrative time. So TIF area number five, there's no activity, but we still have to fill out the form, just so the county knows that we're intentionally not requesting anything. And then we have TIF number six, which is Glenwood area. So we're certifying for both their portion and the city's LMI portion. LMI is low to moderate income. So the fifty-six thousand would be paid out to them, the thirty-eight thousand the city gets to keep and can use for any purpose for LMI. And then we have some staff and consulting time. And our last TIF area is Urban Renewal Area Seven, which is Carla of Marshalltown. So we just have a development agreement with him. So his estimated payout is two hundred thousand, and then we have staff administrative time. So on page three, is if you earn interest for FY twenty-five, then you report that back to the county. And then also, there was a few examples of calculations from a prior year that needed to be adjusted. And then also, the Goodman Development Agreement, that's Nolan Void. You did a resolution early of fiscal year twenty-five to remove that. So that's on one of those pages as well. Any questions on any of this?
Anyone have any questions? Anything from the public? Roll call, please.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to number four.
We have a public hearing and resolution approving plan specification, form of contract, and cost for the Marshalltown Public Library remodel project in the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, being project number LIB two five zero zero one.
Okay, our call this public hearing open at six twenty-one. I believe we have library architect Hannah Schultz here.
Correct.
Correct? And she will fill us in.
Well, let's see if I can find the right stuff. Sorry, just got close. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Hannah Schultz. I'm an interior designer with FEH Design. Our office is located at six oh four East Grand Avenue in Des Moines. Oh, sorry about that. Okay, I'll restart. Hannah Schultz with FEH Design. I'm an interior designer. Our office is located at six oh four East Grand in Des Moines. I've been working with Sarah for about, I don't know, six months or so now, working on an interior remodel on the southwest corner of the library. Is there anything you want to add? Sarah Rosenblum, Library Director. Yes, this project, when the library was originally built seventeen years ago, the thought was that we might push out the building, but at this time, we are not. We're working within the interior walls, and we're very excited to talk about this new meeting gathering space that we're going to be creating in the library. And this project, just to remind you, is being totally funded by the Friends of the Marshalltown Public Library and all of our great donors. All right. So just a little bit about the project. I believe, let's hear, is the hundred percent construction documents that were sent out November, would have been fourth was when they were completed, and then you awarded, or you approved them the week after to go out to bid. So what you're seeing here, this is the southwest corner of the building. This is our demo plan. So as you can see, there's not a whole lot in this space. What you're seeing in kind of this dash-lined area is just the carpet that we're removing. The only other demo that is taking place here is the removal of the existing reference desk to allow for some additional meeting spaces, as well as an interior window here. I'll go ahead and scroll down here. Hopefully, you can see this. I can maybe zoom a bit as well. There we go. Okay, so on the bottom right, this is the entirety of the library. This corner down here is the area that we are speaking to. So this is kind of an enlarged plan of the area that we're looking at. So the overall renovated area is about twenty-eight hundred square feet, and we're looking to add five kind of study and meeting rooms with an occupancy ranging from two to thirty individuals in these spaces. So on the west side of that, or on the east side of that plan, apologies, are some study rooms, as well as a podcast room. And then the general area in the center will be space for just some additional seating and workspaces, as well as some additional stacks for local history. And then over on the west side of the plan is a large conferencing space that would allow for up to thirty individuals. And then you move up to the meeting and the lounge space as well. So a little bit more about this. We'll also have a new reference desk. As you can see here, that reference desk was previously located about where my mouse is, and now will be located in this general area. So still kind of centralized as one is moving through the library. Again, new lounge furniture, kind of general seating throughout the spaces. We did an internal cost estimate for this project after being given a budget by the library. And as of right now, we're estimating about a nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollar construction budget, or project budget. At the moment, CDs for this and the project manual are out to bid. Those bids are due next Tuesday, December second, with the hopes to award the project on December eighth at the city council. As of right now, substantial completion is slated for June first as well. Is there anything you'd like to add, Sarah? I don't think so. We've also had some donations already. So Lennox is donating an RTU, a rooftop unit, because we do need a new rooftop unit. When I worked, we've been working closely with David Deemer, sorry. I've been here too long. David's been great in talking about that new RTU, which will be more efficient. We're talking about replacing a seventeen-year
We're talking about replacing a seventeen-year-old unit. I had asked about costs. He said he thinks that the energy or utility costs will stay about the same, because we are adding more efficient unit. But we also already have a pledge to underwrite the lounge room, so we're excited about that. That's kind of going to be a really new space for us that we think will be very popular. We have some grants into the usual suspects, Martha Allen Ty, Community Foundation. So we're hoping that, we do have this project funded, but obviously, we would like to preserve some of the Friends' capital for, because they do also give us money every year for things like, this year, they're giving us sixty-five thousand dollars for eBooks, another like thirty thousand for programming and other things, especially for the youth area. But we're very excited about this project. We think this is going to be a great way to utilize the space more efficiently. And, you know, the library, I was told, I'm trying to think who would have been here, Gary was, of course, here, not here, but one of the drivers for this library seventeen years ago was free meeting space. So we continue to be one of the few places that offers free meeting space. We're seeing, I think, more use than ever of people wanting to use the library. And we serve a lot of people. I don't know why, I'm still surprised I took a call today. A lot of people meet in Marshalltown. Isn't that one of our slogans? Because we are centrally located, and, you know, the library has a really good reputation for providing good services for people that are, you know, meeting customers, clients, reunions, class reunions, all types of things go on.
I think that's it. Any questions?
This is for both of you, Sarah and Hannah. So when will the construction period be? You said completion, and you're looking at June of next year. So when will you actually start construction? And hang on. And then, very important, Sarah, tell the public the library will not ever be closed during this period. It'll be open all the time.
Well, as long as we have electricity and water, there might be like a half day or a day where they have to shut everything down, but we're not planning on it. And I will tell you, when they go to, they will have to saw cut the floor. And if you've never been through the experience of saw cutting a concrete floor, it's incredibly noisy. But our plan is to stay open, and we're hoping to start right after the new year. And we feel like David was very pleased with the contractors that showed up. There are some local contractors, people's names that you would recognize that I know have worked on projects here at the school district, State Center Library. So we're hoping that this is a good winter project. So nobody, you know me, I worry about everything, and I haven't heard that tariffs are going to affect us. I hope not. But, you know, we are hoping that, well, you know, like, I think, Diana was just saying, you know, a lot of our projects do come in underbid. So, and we have some kind of like, we would like to do some extra things, replace the computer desks with a better, better fit for what people are doing. But, yeah, we're very excited about all of these items.
I think she covered your answer pretty well. I'm not sure there's anything else I would add other than, we will be, since the library will be open throughout the duration of construction, we will be putting up a temporary interior partition around this space, just to kind of seclude that area off, so none of the general public is kind of getting into that space. But otherwise, I think she answered your question.
Do you want to talk a little about the light and how you've worked to maintain the natural light?
Yeah, sure. So Sarah asked if I could speak to a little bit of the design and the intent of maintaining all the natural light that's in there. There are a lot of what's called the clear story windows, so some windows kind of up high, up above kind of your normal window height, that really run a lot of the way through this general space down the center of the library. But then really, you'll see kind of all along these exterior walls, there's a ton of natural light that really just fills that space. Now, everybody has their preferences for whether or not they want their natural light when they're working on a computer or not. But we wanted to maintain the opportunity to still let some of that light come through here. One of the things with this renovation, being able to get some of these additional meeting spaces, was that to maintain some acoustical value, we have to take those new walls all the way up to the roof deck. And so with that, we maintain some lower windows and some upper windows in these new walls to allow for some of that light to still transfer through the spaces and into the general area. That way, when you now walk into this new space, it's not all drywall. You used to be surrounded by nice, big, beautiful windows. So that's something we've worked hard to maintain in this space as well.
I'd like to add, too, that Hannah is with FEH. FEH is our original architect that I have only heard great things about. I was not here. I came fourteen years ago. The library was three years old. And they have been, I think, I think they're truthful, very complimentary about the way we've maintained the library. And, I mean, I go to a lot of libraries, and I'm really picky. And I know that ours is maintained well. I want to thank everybody that helps with that. But I think they're very pleased to see that their work has really stood the test of time. And I know this work will be long after I'm gone. I mean, even gotten gone from the planet, but yes. So we're excited about this project. A little nervous, because it's always, you know, a big project, at least it's a big project to me, so.
Does anyone from the public have anything to ask?
Well, I wasn't going to speak, but I will. You can put me out of order as well. Linda Clark, I am proud to say I have lived in this city seventy-six years. And I understood Sarah to say that this is already paid for, correct, Sarah? That we have private people that have donated all of this money? So God bless every one of those, Lennox, everybody that's kicked in to help. You know, because I am at the age that I am concerned about, A, my property taxes. Am I going to be able to pay them? I balance my budget, and I expect the city and the county to do the same. So do you want to put me out of order? That's all I'd like to say. I am praising everybody. We have a homeless population problem, as we all know. We have people getting hit and killed because of the traffic. I stay home.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, with that, I'll call the public hearing closed and move on to the resolution.
Move to approve.
Second.
I think we already did that one. Roll call, please.
Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to ordinances.
Ordinance one five one one three, to amend the Code of Ordnance, City of Marshalltown, Iowa, by repealing and replacing Chapter seventy-two Parking Rules, Section seventy-two point one oh two B and seventy-two one oh nine, third reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Good evening, Heather Thomas, Public Works. This is the third and final reading on the ordinance that discusses the configurations of allowable parking on street. So this talks about parallel parking, ninety-degree parking, angle parking, and back-end angled parking. Change in this ordinance allows the ability for the parking enforcement officer in the Housing and Community Development Department, as well as police officers, the ability to ticket if somebody is parked out of configuration as specified. With that, I'll open it up for questions.
Go ahead.
Heather, where do we have ninety-degree parking? I'm just drawing a blank on that.
Yeah, so I put it in there as an ability to cover, but I also do believe we have some just east of Third Ave in the north portion of town, along some of those businesses there. They do allow ninety-degree parking on the east side. That'd be opposite of Riverside Street, I believe.
Is that in the street, or is that on their property?
It would be an extension of the street.
And then, I think Councilman Mitchell asked a question about head-end angle parking and back-end angle parking. And I think you made a comment, you wanted to stay with both. But if studies show back-end angle parking is safer, why do we have, why are we going to continue to have both? Why don't we change all angle parking to back-end angle parking?
I think that's something if the council is interested in, that could be further discussion at a later time. Right now, we're focused on the downtown and the recommendations from the downtown implementation plan for back-end downtown. I think it's appropriate to see how that goes before we go into other areas and make that change.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anything from the public? Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, Heather, I talked to a driver's instructor from the high school about the back-end parking, and asking what his opinion was, and he said it would make it a lot easier for people to back in if we would put the lines up onto the curb a little bit so that you could actually see them. Something that we could do?
I think that's something we can explore further. I've also had some feedback about the sun glare in rearview mirrors, and I am looking into some contrastic pavement markings as well. So there's things we can do as comments come in.
Thank you.
Good comment. Anything from the public? Roll call, please. I'm sorry. How I missed you with that shirt, I have no idea.
I was camouflaged, camouflaged, sir. Lonnie Hogland, fourteen oh eight East Main, I think the head-end, back-end park- Lonnie Hogland, fourteen oh eight East Main, thank you, sir, is a good idea. It takes a learning curve, and I like how Councilman Thompson mentioned, hey, maybe we ought to, why should we mix them? That gets people confused. I would look into switching it all to back-in, because I think someone studied and said back-in's a great thing. So if it's all possible, switch it all to back-in.
My own comment with that is, I think we leave the head-end diagonal parking as an option. There may be some instances where head-end makes more sense than the back-end does. I can't imagine what it'd be, but it keeps that option open for us.
I'd like to make an amendment, if I may.
Okay.
I'd like to make an amendment that we eliminate the head-end angle parking. And we would have to grandfather in what's already painted until spring, when Public Works has time to repaint that. So I'd make an amendment to this ordinance that we go with parallel head-in, or parallel ninety-degree and back-in only.
Heather Thomas, Public Works. Currently, the ordinance in front of you is Chapter seventy-two. In Chapter seventy-two, this section is not where those schedules are listed. So it wouldn't be an amendment to this specific ordinance. It would be a change to a different section of our Code of Ordinance.
But correct me if I'm wrong, isn't this... Okay, I'll go with that.
Are you withdrawing the...
Yeah, I'll make a, I'll make a motion after we approve this one.
Okay, then. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, are you withdrawing the amended motion?
Yes.
Okay. Nichols?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Fonseca?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm probably out of order, because I'm not even sure this would, this would need three readings to make a motion to amend Chapter seventy-two to eliminate head-end angle parking.
I think you can make a motion for us to bring that back to the council for three readings.
I need to know if it's a legitimate motion, or if it is, it needs a second before we discuss that.
Yes, I'm just giving you a point of order, I guess. So you can make a motion to bring that back to a future meeting.
I don't need to then, because we can discuss that and put it on agenda later.
Okay.
So I don't need to make a motion, if that's all we're going to do, if that's all I can do. So thank you.
So you're withdrawing your motion?
I'm withdrawing my erroneous motion, according to the city administrator.
Well, meeting adjourned.